All righty, it's time to get started. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Pierceville to be held today, May 14th. The time is 7:00 PM at the Pierceville City Hall. May I have a roll call, please? President?
Robert Nolié.
Present.
Richard Gaga.
Here.
Solis Nandis.
Here.
Bernard Simeon.
William Ed Nandis.
Here.
Ben Verstra.
Here.
Here.
We have a call, so let us stand for our roll call. I mean, sorry, we're in case you're not listening. Senor Prasto, are you in the house?
Ladies and gentlemen, we come before you once again, Lord God, and ask for your blessing upon this city council meeting here tonight. Pray, Lord God, for anything that's about to take place, to take full control of that heaven, acting from the nation. I pray that you bless what our council has served and has promised us now. Bless those that are coming here. We pray, Lord God, wisdom, knowledge, and guidance upon their lives. Lord God, that the city of Pierceville will be blessed by those through them who reach in every and every citizen in a mighty way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. To the justice, to the light of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in a legal, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone signed up as a citizen to be heard? And if not, we'll move on to 5A. Mr. Martin Martinez, from South Texas Rural Health, to present on local resources with substance abuse. You can take the floor, sir. Being that we have limited resources being in a rural community, I just wanted to enlighten some of the -- especially our PD, on the resources that South Texas Rural Health has to offer when it comes to opioid and substance addictions. So, sir, you may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Martin Martinez from South Texas Rural Health Services. I am a recovery coach, and my assistant, Garrett, she's also a recovery coach. She will be our recovery coach here in Pierceville. Her name is Mary Luis Solis. And I'm just going to give you a quick thing about our programs. Suboxone program is a -- as well, we have a big opioid epidemic going on in the U.S. And it's not just in the big cities, but into rural areas. And it affects all walks of life, rich, poor, it doesn't matter. It can affect you, and it's affecting a lot of people. The program that we have here now in Pierceville, we just started in Pierceville probably three weeks ago. And it's a suboxone. What it is, it's a small strip that they will -- the clients will stick underneath their tongue, and as it dissolves, it kills cravings for the opioids, the pain pills, and the heroin. It is a -- it's something that we, you know, you have to see a doctor and also go to counseling. So it's not just something we just throw these people in and then see if it works on them. It's doing great wonders. We had the program already in Carrizo, and we've had it there for about a year. And the reason we brought it to Pierceville, because we're already booked over there. We're to our limit. And right now, since we're just starting the program, the doctors are only allowed to have 30 patients underneath it. After a year, we'll be able to get up to 100 patients underneath that doctor. So we're already at full capacity in Carrizo, so we brought it to Pierceville, and our next location will be in Papula. But it's doing wonders over there in the Carrizo area. The -- like I say, they do go to the doctor, they get diagnosed. The first time they do receive the prescription, they have to go pick up the prescription, come back to the office, they take it, and we have them sit there for two hours, and we've got to wait them again, see what kind of effect it's having on them. And then we set them up for group sessions. They got to go each time before they get the prescription, they have to go see a counselor. And the counselor gives them a group split, they take it to the doctor, the doctor sees them, and then they get a prescription. Like I say, it is doing wonders over there in the Carrizo area. It's -- I've heard it called the wonder drug. I've read a lot of stuff online and stuff, you know, entertainers and stuff like that that were hooked on heroin, and this is one way that they've been beaten on. So now I'm going to let you know a little bit about what we as recovery coaches do. Me and her, we work with the clients. We're there to assist them. The main thing about being a recovery coach is that you -- we have to be in recovery ourselves. I'm a recovery alcoholic, I'm a recovery cocaine addict, and gambling also. And it's a coincidence that today is my birthday. I turned 53 today, and I had to go to -- I went to rehab in Uvalde. And today in Uvalde, I had a train, which was, you know, it was kind of an eye-opener for me. I've been using since I was 12 years old. I turned 52 while I was in rehab, and it was a year -- last year for my birthday, I was in rehab. And it just, you know, it was something amazing, because I was like, wow, I think the Lord was showing me something like, look where you were at last year, and look at where you are now. And my recovery is faith-based. There's different types of recovery, you know, you've got your fall sets, and, you know, there's other ways. And mine is through faith, and I believe, you know, after 40-something years of abusing, that it's finally, you know, I finally got to the point to where, you know, hey, I was fed up, because as an addict, you know, I could sit here and preach to somebody all day long, but they're not going to change until they're ready. And that is the thing about being an addict. I know a lot of people have, you know, either know someone or in their family, and just don't give up on these people, because we're not bad people, we just make bad decisions. And the thing is, unless you're an addict, you don't know what it feels like to wake up, and all you think about is getting that drug. Before I went in, I was a -- I'm diabetic also. I've been on insulin for about 15 years. And before I went in, I had a good job at the city. I, you know, I was working my four years down with the city. I had insurance, but the last two years of my life, I was in such a big state of depression, I had just, you know, I was separated from my wife and stuff. I didn't touch my meds for two whole years. I was going down the drain fast. I was on probation, I got 40 WIs. I'm an alcoholic also. I hadn't drank in three years, but I just started using cocaine every day. And that was the only thing I would think about it. And I thought it was helping me out, to say, yeah, it's a boost, but it was just digging me deeper. I was going deeper and deeper into depression, and finally, I just, I knew I was going to be dirty for a U.A. I went in, and they told me, oh, you're doing a good job, Marcus. We'll see you next month. Just sign it. And I sat down outside of my probation, and something just came over me, and I know it was the Lord telling me, look, that's it, it's time. And I walked in, and I told him, no, I need to see my P.O. right now. And she -- I went in, she let me see her, they made a phone call to Uvalde, they got me in, and that's the best thing that's ever happened to me. I, you know, it's, you know, I finally woke up and realized that I was going nowhere, killing myself at the same time. It's just not, it's not something, you know, when I was in there in rehab, I would see these guys, these young, I see a lot of young faces here. There were some kids in there turning 18 while I was in there. I said, you guys don't have to wait that long. You know, you don't have to, you know, be like me and realize you've got a problem when you're 52 years old. You know, you've got time to change. And believe me, it's affecting the younger generation. I started when I was 12. I just, we, I went in, I talked to the junior high last week in Eagle Pass, and there was a kid in there that he was eighth grade, and he already had OD on cocaine and stuff. He was already addicted, eighth grade. So we could, you know, and that's just not, you know, it's just, you can get addicted to, I mean, you know, a lot of things. And back to the program, I'm sorry, I missed out on that, the suboxone is for the opioids and the heroin. But at South Texas Rural Health, we also offer, we also offer, you know, behavioral, we have counselors there for behavioral treatment, any substance abuse, marijuana, cocaine, alcohol, we have substance abuse there. And a lot of this stuff, even the suboxone, is covered by most of your insurances. But if you don't have insurance, don't -- that's not a reason not to go, because as a clinic, we will base it on your income. So we have a sliding scale. There's some people in there, you know, seeing counselors for $5. Sometimes we have a program where it pays for your counseling. So there's a lot of help out there, and this wasn't around when I was working there. So that's why we, I definitely wanted to let the public know, and I appreciate the counselor giving me an opportunity, because we've got to get the word out. And it's just, it's hard, and like I say, it is hard, you know, it's hard coming out, it's hard asking for help. But once we get them in there, we have a chance to work with them. You know, and like I say, as an addict, you burn a lot of bridges. It's hard to trust these people. You know, a lot of them, they don't have no help. Nobody wants to help them anymore. You know, they're tired, they're tired, they're not going to change, they're not going to change. But, you know, me and her, we're living examples, and it can happen, and it can happen, and, you know, like I say, I have a lot of faith in what we do, and we take our job very seriously. So I'm going to leave some pamphlets here with my business card, and it has the numbers of our behavioral clinics on the back. Like I say, we're so lucky that we have it here in Pierceville, and I really do want to take advantage of it, and, you know, and just spread the word. Addiction is, you know, it's funny how, as an addict, like I say, me myself, I was killing myself, and even that wouldn't stop me from doing it. You know, you got your, with alcohol, you get the cirrhosis, I've seen some, a lot of bad cases where, you know, I'm like, man, not even to that point do they stop what they're doing. But it's like, it's like me with my diabetes, I need my insulin, or, you know, to manage it and stuff. It's the same thing with addiction. You can't do it on your own. You need a support group, you need, you know, people you can talk to. You know, that's, that's just the whole thing about it, is, you know, that a lot of people, that was me. I always thought I could do it on my own. I was a long-distance runner in high school. I was like, you know, if I could run 13 miles, hell, you know, buddy, I can do everything on my own. They're like, no, that's not true. I mean, it took me that long to realize that you do need help, you do need support. So like I say, don't give up on these people, just, you know, try, try talking to them. Pray for them. But I just wanted to let you guys know about our program, that's got a full house here, and I really, I'm glad we have that. But so let's take advantage of this, since we do have it right here in your community, and we will be getting it at our other clinics. You know, when it comes to sobriety, I don't think, you know, 15, 30, 40 miles, it's a small price to pay, because of the law that was trying to save some people. So I appreciate your time, and let's do something about this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Martinez. All right, we moving on to 5B, Mr. Adam Beaver for the 2019 South Texas 4-H Shootout Follow-up Report.
Good evening.
My name is Jackson Weaver, and I'm here on the McAdams of the Frio County 4-H Play Busters. Joining me tonight is Madison Brown, Reagan Brown, Troy Allen, Monder Marine Kane, Cody Briller out, Luke Almond, and Dustin in the back. Anyway, on April 5th and 6th, we held our annual Texas, South Texas 4-H Shootout at the Tennesse Compost Ranch, and we had around 140 participants, some of whom traveling from places pretty far away, Ankr, Hankamar, Andrews County, Kingsville, and Fort, you know, really out there. We had some hotels, ran out, at least 24 rooms, based on the data that we received from our surveys. The club generated around 16,000 in revenue, and we were going to use that money to go towards things such as repairing machines, fixing one of our damaged fields, helping with entries, and providing scholarships for some of our graduating seniors. In conclusion, we'd like to thank the City of Pierceville for their continual support of our program, and as our token of appreciation, or gratitude rather.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, moving on to 5C, Leah Carizales regarding Main Street Recognition.
We got the certificate for the national and the Texas certificate for the regulation, so we want to take a picture with the council.
Can I take a picture?
We got a letter from Deborah Gusher, which is the state coordinator for Texas, and it's dated April 2019. It says, "Managers and board members, in closing, certificate reflecting annual progress as a Texas Main Street community, which results in National Main Street Association for 2019. This recognition reflects the hard work of your local leadership to unite partners in the Main Street globalization effort. Congratulations. On behalf of the entire staff of the Texas Main Street program, I'd like to say that we are proud of your community's involvement and success as a Main Street community, and we value the opportunity to work with you.
That's awesome.
We have the Main Street Board here to a couple of the members. Can y'all come out so we can take a look at it, please?
Please stand. Please stand.
I didn't get a chance to even see my hand.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on to item 6A, Action to Consent Agenda. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Approval of Minutes for April 23rd, 2019 Council Meeting. This is an action item. Entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, not entertain a motion to approve, please?
I move that we approve the minutes for April 23rd, 2019.
There's a motion on table. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. All righty, oh, business. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Amending Criteria for the City of Pierceville's Summer Rec Program Participation. This is an action item. Entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. This is a table item. We need to entertain a motion to untable first.
I move that we approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor and councilmember, as you know, we have partnered up with Summer, with Summer Ride and the ACE program to go ahead and work and integrate together closely. So with that being said, we're putting both the programs together, and being able to do so, we're asking to waive the administration fee. Previously, we did $20 as an entry fee, and then $5 for each additional pit, so it would be free. The ages would be from 6 to 18, rather, 6 to 13 was previous ages. It would only be available to Pierceville and the school district and Oak County town. Also, our dates would be from July 1st to August 2nd, and we will be open from 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM at the same location.
Which location is that?
At intermediate.
What fee are they levying?
The admission fee, the entry fee was $20 before.
For a student?
For each, well, the initial one, and then each stipend after was $5. So right now, since we're partnering up with ACE, it will be different. There, they aren't even like any fees, so for us to partner up with them, everything will be free. So we'll both be able to get the students and be able to make the program.
Awesome. Yes, sir.
Does the city incur any cost?
We will still maintain our budget for the 20, and we will still have our employees, the expenses that incur, and then the ACE program will cover any additional expenses incurred with them collaborating with us. So they will have staff on site as well to cover their income, and take more students to go ahead and come on board with us, and they will also be providing expenses or craft activities that they already have, so they will partner up with us, so that our program is sufficient for all of us.
Any more questions? All righty, there's no further questions or comments. We need to entertain a motion to address items 7 and 8, please.
May I move that we approve the amended criteria for the City of Pierceville Summer Recreation Program?
There's a motion on the table. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, put your hands, please. Motion carries unanimously. All righty. This was a previously tabled item, so we need to entertain a motion to untable.
I, Madam Mayor, make a motion untable for item 7B.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? And this item, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Fees for the Use of the City Park Donation of the Memorial Equipment.
Madam Mayor and councilmember, again, we're faced with the parks and recreation fees as well that we want to go ahead and address with the park, rental park, sports park, whatever is encompassed in one. The policy, the rules and regulations are as well provided to you. The rates are changing. We have it to $75 currently. We're at $20 for the parks, so it entails a different rate that we have implemented in here to help support our parks. As you know, our few area bullet buttons being utilized right now, the park is being utilized, and there's no fees, because we're trying to get this coordination placed to go ahead and be approved. This has been submitted to y'all previously, and I know we had also talked about the donation of the benches and trees for those with lost loved ones that would want to purchase. That also is provided to you to go ahead and look at the policy and the rates that are on there for your benches and your trees. This was just added on, so if you need more time to go ahead and address these issues, you can go ahead and purchase them more if you need, or if it's something that you don't have.
So these fees are, you're requiring about, inquiring about, an event and a group would like to rent the whole entire park, but just for an ordinary person going to have a barbecue, we're not charging for that, right?
Right.
Explain, yeah. I just want to make sure.
It is for the city park. Do you have it on?
If they're requesting, if they're requesting the electricity, water, barbecue pit, of course, there will be a fee. As you all know, that there's plenty of picnic tables and barbecue pits around the park, so that is free to public. Of course, like you said, it's a public park, we can't close it, so the people are still invited to, you know, use the pits and the barbecue. Of course, like I said, you want electricity, you want water, you want the restrooms, there is a fee for that. What we're trying, what we're trying to do is we're trying to keep it the same as the county, county charges $75. They're away with the deposit, and basically $75, flat free, and that's what we're looking to go to.
Who's in charge of the, at, to book the parks and stuff? Like, who's in charge of going out there and, like, when there's a gathering going on and stuff?
There's a person in the parks department that's always on duty. It's either myself, or my crew leader, or the employees.
Because I had, I had several complaints over the weekend, because the G.O. apparently had a, had a gathering there.
Yes.
And they called me to tell me that they had rented it, like, from 10 to 4:00, and that somebody went out there and told them at 3:00 that they had to leave.
I was on the line.
And that was not, I mean, if they're...
They got it to 4:00, or they got to whatever time, but we'll give them to that client.
Well, I don't know who it was that was on call that did that.
I'll hold that.
So you did clarify that, in case they rent the canopy and what have you, you're not closing it off to any other citizen?
No.
Even if it's a large party, it's still open for citizens?
Yes, exactly.
Including the splash pad, the state park?
Exactly, yes, yes. Like I said, the only time that that'd be up to the council, exclusive rights, would be for the church, when they host their events, or that's the only one. That can be, that can be changed.
I had a question. I was looking at the times for the splash pad, is that correct?
Yes, we go with the, with the per se.
No, it said from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM on the splash pad at the climbing complex.
I checked that, because sometimes we were having problems with the, with plot on that one.
Yeah, there were some discrepancies on here also. I do suggest somebody proofread all this before it gets put into ordinance.
It's supposed to be 11:00 PM, right?
What time? It said from, from 9:00, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
What time is supposed to be? 9:00 to 11:00 PM?
11:00 PM.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion to address 7B. May I make a motion to table this item? There's a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Time to review it, okay. There's a second, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. So moving on to item 8, Executive Session according to executive government, Chapter 551, Subchapter D, 551.774, I of 8, 8A, Conduct Interviews for Municipal Court Judges, Item AB, Discussion Regarding Appointment of a Municipal Court Judge. So entertain a motion for executive session to recess for executive session, please.
I move.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Time is 7:30. Time is seven thirty.
Second.
Call in favor? Time is eight twenty-six. An open session, since the, the appointment of the municipal judge is supposed to be run along with my term, we will table this item until the next special meeting. Alrighty, moving on to new business. New discussion, new business A, discussion of possible action regarding the drought contingency plan. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
All in favor? Alrighty, yes ma'am.
Madam Mayor, councilmember, we have a drought contingency plan, which we have adopted since September of two thousand eleven. We have to have a five-year supplemental plan for C E Q in order to be compliant and have a contingency drought plan in place and effective. The drought was provided to, it has been prepared by our engineering to make sure these drought contingency plans are sufficient for our path in our community as well as review by the body. So regulations approved to be compliant with C E Q.
You guys have a chance, yes, go ahead.
Oh, I haven't a chance to look at it yet. Has there been, has there been any changes to it?
No, what we did is we went ahead and the doctor, he took it down from, from your watch party. Mr. Velasquez?
Jesse Velasquez.
Jesse, sorry, Jesse. And everything's still the same, we're still using the average of about two hundred thousand gallons, and we haven't had the drought. So this contingency plan has it on there to go stage one, if you hit eighty percent, if you're down to eighty percent, and then so on and so forth. And of course, it also goes with the city manager. If it's replaced also in case if you lose one, one well or two wells, if needed, we can also do it twice. Everything, you're producing more than enough, we have one of the wells that we're rotating and only using about fifty to sixty thousand gallons per day, and we can actually use about five hundred and fifty thousand gallons, but we're trying to rotate the wells. And so we can prolong the life of the motors. We're good then.
When you rotate the, the wells, does that affect the water pressure?
No, because it's all stabilized already, so I mean, it shouldn't affect at all. We have it to where we're running the two wells and still holding pressure. But we had a, an east plant, we had a Colorado, and Colorado at the same time, we're still running pretty good. They have capacity to run, you know, to a hundred percent, with just two of, we're running three, I rotate one.
Any other questions? Comments? If not, we need to entertain a motion to address ten B, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the drought contingency plan.
In accordance with number? Oh, the drought contingency plan, okay, that's right. There's a motion on the table, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, brush your hands, please. Motion carries. Alrighty, moving on to ten B, discussion of possible action regarding, what is the number, two zero one nine, that's zero five, that's zero one. Amending the wastewater treatment plant commercial rates. Entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, councilmember, we are reviewing the wastewater treatment plant commercial rates for the home wastewater. We currently have it coming down for any of the seventy-three things go through. We do have current at eighty-two dollars and eighty-five cents per thousand gallon. We have done this with the surrounding communities with Pleasanton, which offers a twenty-five dollar for one thousand gallons, and then two seventy-five for four thousand, five thousand. And also has an annual application fee of two hundred. The Tula is the same as us, eighty-two eighty-five, didn't identify what value. And the light source design, they're not applicable, they don't receive any home wastewater. For those rates, we're still waiting on, I'll have to get some information if they are, what their rates are. Currently, our wastewater treatment plant is permitted for one point nine five million, and the current capacity that we occupy is about fifty percent for the summer months and in the winter about forty-eight percent. So we're able to go ahead and support those of the subjects and all that that needs to come through. We are proposing a rate for four hundred and fourteen twenty-five, pretty much saying that they're capped out at five thousand. So if a truck comes in and we are not able to gauge it, we're going to assume everybody's cool, there's no way to see it, it's five thousand, so they have to pay the four fourteen twenty-five. The max loads that we're recommending is two to three loads, just to keep an eye on our wastewater treatment plants. We don't want it to get too overproduced with all the trucks coming in, if that may be the case, we'll gauge it. Again, that's a proposed rate, the schedule would be, Mondays and Tuesdays are off, they do all their testing for the wastewater treatment plant, so there will be no sludge drop off there. And then we will be open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, one four PM, and no industrial trucks. It will be simply company, affordable, pretty much what we deal with here with our dispatches and whatnot.
Excuse me. Now, what was that again, at what year?
Start from the beginning?
No, no, the last part.
Which part?
Monday, Tuesday.
No industrial.
Or what were we referring to?
For the stepage tanks, for the, for these stepage tanks that are coming, the RVs, all the wastewater that they bring in to us, to ours. Of course, we haven't done it within these past two years, we've shut it down. So what we're trying to do is to go ahead and allow them to come in and drop off their sludge with us, but it would be a four hundred and four-two dollar twenty-five load, up to five thousand, up to five thousand gallons would be their, their base price.
So we're still not going to be accepting commercial, commercial businesses that do the cleanups, is that correct?
Commercial, yes, just not industrial, we don't want industrial businesses coming in, just local community, RV cars, pretty much everything that we have here, we'll be worried about everybody else coming through here as well. And we do want to keep a gauge on it for the two to three loads, just depending on how our, our treatment plant does react and how much of the flow we're going to get. We don't want all the trucks coming in, so that's what they're indicating.
How did you arrive at the four fourteen?
It's eighty-two eighty-five per thousand gallons, up to five thousand, so, yeah. So instead of the guys trying to figure out, okay, where are they at, it's really hard to see, okay, are these trucks full or they're not? Of course, they've been coming and saying maybe not, just five thousand, all across the board, four fourteen twenty-five. Of course, it is a proposed rate, you can go ahead and identify whatever else, but this is what we've got throughout the surrounding communities, and that's what our current rate is right now, but as of right now, we're not accepting anybody.
So whether they have a thousand gallons or five thousand gallons, they have to pay four fourteen?
Four fourteen twenty-five. And if you look at the Pleasanton one, they're at seventy-five, which is a little bit lower than us, and then two seventy-five for the four thousand, five thousand. But they also do an annual application of two hundred, so they can identify who their regular customers are. And we pretty much know that we currently have about two returning customers that we, we anticipate paying right now, so that's just an option.
Doesn't it tell you how late it's determined, four thousand and five thousand gallons? How do they determine?
Well, on their trucks or whatever they end up bringing, it has the gallons on there. So whatever their truck identifies, they're assuming that it's full, so four thousand, five thousand, if that truck identifies five thousand and maybe it's less, they're going to give you a five thousand is your base price.
So is there any way for us to give?
We would do it off the same thing, when the trucks come in, see how many gallons that tank is, that's what we would charge.
So some of these tanks, they have a little finger on there and it tells you how much it's in there?
Yeah, well, I'm confused then, because you said anywhere between one thousand and five thousand gallons is still to pay four fourteen.
Our base price would be five thousand. So we're just going to assume whether their truck comes in and identifies a thousand gallon, that's the total capacity, we're going to charge them four fourteen twenty-five. If a truck comes in and it's a seven thousand gallon truck, we would charge them the four fourteen twenty-five, and then it says right here on proposed per gallon afterwards would be the eighty-two eighty-five. But anything between five thousand and less, we're not going to, we're not going to break it down by eighty-two eighty-five per thousand gallon. Does that make sense? It's a base, a base price, it's four fourteen twenty-five.
So you're capping them out at, say suppose, three loads per day, right?
Yes.
At five thousand gallons per load.
Per load.
So it's four fourteen per load.
Per load.
And you're capping them out at three loads.
At three loads.
Daily.
Day. And on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Right, right.
Madam Mayor, but we don't anticipate a whole lot of that?
We don't, like I said, from prior history, that was identified, we usually get like two companies. Depending on the oilfield twenty-five or what may happen, it may increase, but that's why we're capping it at two to three loads, to make sure we don't over exceed our capacity or issue the rise, it wouldn't be that detrimental to shutting it down and fully onto the back of the maintenance or whatever.
That would be two companies not doing this every day, we're talking about once a month or once every quarter, we're not talking about the total effect, but anticipated.
So did you say Pleasanton it was, that was seventy-five dollars, or?
Seventy-five, they had seventy-five for the, for a thousand gallons, the chart is sheet up there, and then two seventy-five for four thousand, five thousand. And then they have their annual application of two hundred.
Which makes it four seventy-five.
And I don't know what their process is for their application or form looks like, what is required. That was just something that we just put together and what they were going to apply. So this is just something to reference, so we can look at it and then see and come back and go ahead and.
Did you happen to call Charlotte and Crystal City, because I know Crystal City does this.
Okay, I don't believe so.
And Charlotte is also accepting everything we have.
What was the name?
Charlotte, Charlotte, Texas. It's Crystal City.
Yeah, we can ask.
Alrighty, since you're going to defer their investigation, we'll entertain a motion to table this item, please. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Alrighty, motion carries. Alrighty, we're moving on to item C, discussion of possible action to authorize litigation for Brenda Trevino's insurance claim. This is an action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Brush your hands.
Madam Mayor, councilmember, we have Brenda Trevino for the request of litigation. As you know, back in two thousand seventeen T M L, we had an incident, Ms. Brenda Trevino was with all of us representing the city council in the city for T M L. There was an incident in which some of her possessions were taken. So this, this property has belonged for two years, and we're just trying to get the information or, or an approval of what is the next step to go ahead and move forward with this case. So that way, either the city is going to, to go ahead and report on Ms. Brenda Trevino's litigation, so the city of Pierceville would have to pay for the litigation, or if she's going to go ahead and pursue this litigation on, on her own. I don't know if there's anything else, something that you want to identify this?
I don't know if everybody's familiar with it or not?
No?
No? So we went to the T M L conference and when Mary and I had arrived, the hotel had taken our luggage, and because we were taking a while to, for them to get us our room or register or something, the hotel had taken my luggage and her luggage, and they had set it aside, they had given us the ticket, so that whenever we were ready, we could, we could, you know, claim our stuff or just let them know and they could take it up to our room. In the process, I mean, while we were there waiting, somebody walked into the hotel room and our, I think, how it was, our cart that had all of our luggage was on the very end, because there were several carts there, and somebody just walked in and grabbed one of the smaller bags of mine, and I had some jewelry in there, I had some, just like chargers and stuff for like my iPhone and iPad and stuff, and some other stuff, but when they took the stuff up to the room, I noticed that it was missing, so I went down to go tell them, and while, while I was walking down, about to go around to the, to the receptionist, my bag was on the floor. And so I went and I told the lady, I'm gonna, I was going to come tell you that my, one of my bags was missing, but I think that's my bag on the floor. And so I said, do you want me to touch it, or you want to just, you know, get it, and so she said, no, go ahead and get it and hand it to me. So I was trying to explain to her what was in the bag, and what I was telling her was in the bag was not in the bag. So then I said, okay, well then, if that's not there and that's not there, then there's, there's, I had a bill book where I had all my bills and stuff and some other stuff that I was going to be working on while I was there as well. And that was the only thing that was in there, so that's how I was able to identify it. And so I just asked them if they could, I guess, call their security and then if they could go check their, their surveillance and see, you know, what had happened. And sure enough, they had, I never got to see the surveillance, but they said that there was, that they could see that somebody had walked in, grabbed the bag, gone to the bathroom, guy came out, showed it to somebody else, showed some, some items, and then went back into the bathroom, brought the bag out, and then just placed it on the side of where the receptionist was. And so Tinket said, because I was there with the city, that he would ask Bobby to see what he could do. And so for these last two years, we've been trying to get with the hotel to see what we could do. And so I needed to give them a list of things that were missing, and I think there was like, I don't, I don't remember the total amount, but. So I, I don't remember exactly what the, the total amount was, but they said that I need to come up with receipts. Took me a while to get all the receipts, to go to all the places where I had had some of the jewelry purchased. I had a bunch of just sentimental things, some, you know, gift from one of my uncles that had given me something when I was fifteen, several items like that. But a lot of the stuff, since I didn't have receipts, they were gifts or they were custom pieces that I never had appraised. And so none of that was going to count, it was just going to be what was, what I could come up with in receipts. And so I think it was like a little over sixteen thousand that I had in receipts. And so the hotel was, was offering like eight thousand at first, and then they. And so the hotel was, was offering like eight thousand at first and then they said that they could, the best that they could do was like ten thousand. And so I said, no. I mean, if I had sixteen thousand dollars worth of receipts, then I want sixteen thousand. And so at this point, um, the hotel, their, the insurance for the hotel is, is not wanting to do that. And so now we're at this point.
Councilmember, uh, we strongly advise this conversation continues in expected session, even though it is pending litigation, which will want you to jeopardize the potential claim that you might have out there.
Okay.
It is our recommendation to table this, this item. And if the council, if you, if you guys decide, I think I'll have it up in expected session.
Okay, so we'll begin the next agenda for the session. So this item will be tabled. Entertain a motion to table, please? All in favor? Alrighty, discussion regarding request to place on the agenda by Paula Montanadas. Yes, um, I, I will, I will put you on the next agenda because you can't do a discussion unless you're, what, what's on the, all they just say you want to be on the agenda, so I will put you on the next agenda because we don't have any information on, on.
Honey, Crystal.
Right? One second, one second Paula, let me understand, because you can't violate. Did you give me something differently? For the public, it has to be for the public.
Well, is this, is this just a typographical issue here? What was the request that was made in the city?
Uh, the request is to be placed on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, what is the discussion about? Cause to, to.
The process, she's complaining about the process that has taken for her to move from Hope Street to Gomal Street. Is that what I'm understanding?
No.
Okay, then.
About the process on your.
So you helped me with my stuff, making out what my issue is?
Yes.
And I asked you specifically to help me so that I could then get, complete that for the council.
Where's your request? Hold on, I'm gonna get that. And then also in that packet, um. Can I read it out loud, Paula?
Yes.
Okay. It says, I have been denied, uh, to move from one location to another, nothing. It looks like nothing will change, no violation of any ordinance, the city manager also denied. It feels, I'm, I feel discriminated and the process has been delayed. That was her request.
Okay.
That, that's what was written on the request.
So attorney?
So it's.
Um, what's on the agenda? You see that, um, agenda item, right?
Right.
Okay, just, it does not give a discussion for the public. So are we violating Open Meetings Act by allowing Ms. Montanadas to speak?
The only thing that can be discussed on this item is just the, uh, her request to be placed in the agenda.
Exactly.
The contents of the agenda cannot be discussed.
Excuse me? I can't hear you, sir?
Yeah, so the only thing that can be discussed according to the Texas Local Government Code is, is the request to be placed in the agenda, but not the contents itself.
Okay, so I will put you on the next agenda, which will be the next special meeting. Okay? Along with this. So we moving on to discussion and possible action regarding resolution number two zero one nine, that's zero five, that's zero one, canvassing the return and declare the results of regular municipal election held on fourth day of May, twenty nineteen for the purpose of electing mayor and three, um, city council members, or, um, yeah, three city council members pursuant to the city of Pearsall, home charter and other matters in connection there with. This is an action item, need to entertain a motion to discuss, please? All in favor? Awesome. Motion carries unanimously. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, elections for election day was made for. Um, I have the total results we did receive, um, one provisional that was cured. Um, along with, I believe it was ten applications for ballot and ballot were received. The second and the fourth, so they did all qualify. Um, the final results, the mayor was unopposed and she automatically takes receipt. Councilmember place number five, Robert Villarreal, uh, won with a total votes of six hundred and seventeen versus Aurora Guards of three hundred and forty-four. Councilmember, place number six, Robyn Segovia, won five eighty-five over Ben T. Briscoe with the number of four twenty-seven. Councilmember place number seven, Terino Rodriguez, won with the number of five sixty-seven over Galen Frazier with a total of four thirty-one. We have Mr. Olaas here, who conducted election day. Um, you already know he starred, ran early voting. Uh, any questions?
No questions, anybody? Not, we need to entertain a motion to address resolution number two zero one, no? You have a question?
Are all of these numbers being, uh, read up?
That's total, that's including, it's been amended right here. Do you have anyone? It should have been placed on top of your separate from time. But the title, the one I think you got. Yes, the one that the sign does have the accurate updated numbers.
Alrighty, no further discussion. Um, need to entertain a motion to address resolution number two zero one nine, that's zero five, that's zero one. We looking at somebody to entertain a motion, and that's you.
I know that we have a group of resolution, uh, two zero one nine, oh five, we have to canvass the return to verify the results of the regular group's election held on the fourth day of May, twenty nineteen for the purpose of electing mayor and increasing council members' place honesty.
There's a motion on the table, may I have a second, please?
Okay.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Alrighty, swearing in of newly elected officials. We have a judge in the house. Yes, let him stand right there.
I'm gonna ask this, and then I'll, and then you can sign your votes, I already have the meeting secretary's.
Do you have a piece for me, Judge? I can do it right here.
You got a word for the mayor also, please? Hi, Inspector Neff, please?
Mary Moore.
Who's on the square?
Who's on the square?
And I want faithfully executed.
That way you faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duty of the office of mayor. Of Pearsall.
Of state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
Will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Reserve, protect and defend.
Reserve, protect and offend.
The Constitution and laws of the United.
I mean, defend, I'm sorry.
And the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, thank you. And the, and the plaques?
This appreciation award presented to Ben Briscoe in recognition of your outstanding service to the city of Pearsall and its citizens as a council member made twenty fifteen to May nineteen. City of Pearsall Mayor Moore Council and current city manager of the city of Pearsall is made fourteen twenty nineteen. You will be missed. Thank you for your service.
Appreciation award presented to Galen Frazier in recognition of your outstanding service to the city of Pearsall and its citizens as a council member from April two thousand eighteen to May two thousand nineteen. Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys, very much. Thank you to you, the council and the mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Really enjoyed it. God bless you, guys. Thank you all, good luck.
Thank you. Okay, item H, discussion of possible action regarding resolution number two zero one nine, zero five, zero two, accepting nomination of qualified individual to serve as mayor pro temp for the city of Pearsall. Um, enforcing section three point zero four of the Pearsall City Charter upon receiving nomination for this position, point a qualified individual to add a required vote as to serve as mayor pro temp for the city of Pearsall. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please?
Motion to discuss.
All in favor? Alrighty. Want someone as mayor pro temp?
Make a motion to nominate, uh, um, Fernandez.
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations. Alrighty. So moving on to city manager's report.
And mayor councilmembers, um, city manager's report as of today. We had our meeting for the annexation of common street. Uh, it was scheduled on May seventh, two thousand eighteen at ten a.m. We had two attendees attend us, um, but a total of five hundred and fifty of plans. The bid opening will be at City Hall Thursday, May sixteenth at two p.m. So, um, we'll get an idea of where we're at and then we'll come back to council and see, uh, what's the best bid for us. Uh, financial report, you have attached there what your, uh, year-to-date financial report. Total tax due, uh, utility bills is two hundred and ninety thousand. You have ninety days, a hundred and twenty-four thousand. Um, we're currently at fifty-eight point thirty-three percent of the budget. All our debt has been paid, our long-term debt as of March, our mortgage will be due in September. Our cash on deposit is one million in general fund. We have debt to the eighty-seven thousand in utility fund. Uh, our, uh, bond is one million and then all our other is three hundred and thirty-three thousand. So we have a total of three million, um, cash on deposit right now. Uh, bad form current, we are currently at ninety-three point ninety-eight percent of the budget. Uh, received, the lease, we're at sixty percent penalty and student cost forty-nine percent. Our city sales tax is at fifty-two percent of the budget. Received, our mixed government tax is a hundred and eleven percent. Uh, we're over on average tax, so that's very good, everything's, I guess, great, I don't know. Franchise fees is sixty-one percent, so we're currently at seventy percent out of fifty-eight percent of current budget for revenues for our major sources and costs. Uh, general fund, our net over is three nineteen thousand. Our utility fund, our net over altogether is fifty thousand. And then of course it's broken down by water and sewer fund, net over three hundred and forty-four thousand. The gas fund is a deficit of sixty-four thousand. Again, that's that prepayment that we do, um, each year in order to get that gas fund in balance. Our garbage fund is forty-nine thousand. Our month man for general fund and utility sources were net over of one thousand. That's current as of April thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Do you have any questions on that report?
Is this for information only, attorney? I think we can't really ask questions during a manager's report. Information only? Because it's not in the agenda?
It is the very question.
Okay, go ahead.
From the sales revenue, uh.
City sales tax?
Yeah, the sales tax revenue. A few months ago, we asked, uh, that we get a report of how that number has, uh.
From previous years?
Yeah, from previous years. How's that number compared to previous years?
We can go ahead and ask those for each of those. Um, now remember we did, because of our annexation, uh, those numbers will be a little bit, um, incorrect because we can't really go back to last year because we weren't annexed. And October, we did provide the annex confirmation to the comptroller. He was delayed in October, he said it was gonna start, but now they're starting to pick up. But even so, we're able to date the run last year. We didn't include it in here, but we're definitely implementing for the.
You should be able to distinguish between the annexation.
Annexation.
Sales revenue.
Yes.
Versus everything else, right?
Everything else.
So I'd just like to see what, uh, what is the trend here over the last three years or so?
Okay.
We need to start looking at those.
To see where the bits are, yes. We'll definitely implement it.
Businesses owners, sometimes, businesses owners when I, when they talk to me, they talk about sales salons and things like that, you know? So we need to start looking at what, what might be going on.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mayor, I have, uh, I have concerns in the city, can I, I report it right now?
Um, no, it has to be on the agenda or about what she just spoke about, so. Right, so.
Um, intersection's project, due to the weather, the intersection street project is currently at a halt. Um, however, we have completed twenty-four of the twenty-nine intersections approved by council and also addressing some of the worst obstacles near the location of the project. So, you know, you've probably seen us, um, do some intersections and a little bit further off there, there are obstacles. So we're trying to address those as well to help have that project more sufficient. Um, the street issues, given the present state of the majority of our streets, although we are being proactive, this weather has caused the issue to rise. We are currently, um, working proactively addressing those issues in which are prominent and to serve the majority of the citizens through high traffic areas, that's our major focus. Um, the weather did leave one of our roads, I know many, but one of the major roads, uh, South Rose Hill and East Beckoos and back to, we're gonna be addressing. Um, there was some rocks of asphalt just thrown all over the place. Uh, with the weather and the, the flood over there with the drainage, it grabbed some of the road and just moved it over and it was just a mess. The guys went out there to see the. So the guys went out there to see that, tried to see the best they can. The weather is coming in and out, so it's a little bit hard to go ahead and tackle everything right now. Have to wait for the weather, weather to settle. Uh, but once, uh, the sun comes back, we'll get back on track and make sure we address all the issues. The UV project awarded, uh, previously is scheduled to be delivered for installation on June 10, 2019, and completion date no later than June 30, 2019. So that's another project that is, um, coming up. The Secret Mile event, the City of Pearsall having to discuss the Secret Mile, um, event that was held at the Civic Center. I don't know if all of y'all were able to attend. Uh, we had a great turnout, with approximately 2,000 attendees, in which we were able to collect 4,790 in entry fees, uh, for the Main Street Revitalization Fund and 625 in benefits fees. We surpassed what we did last year. The attendance was great, the bands were great, everybody was having a good time. We had a very good turnout. Uh, first Friday grand opening, first Friday event was a great success, repeating another metal beat for the South Texas Strengths Business. We showed a class outdoors with music, a bounce house, and for the kids, it was some sort of stuff. So, uh, first Fridays, everyone are getting better and better and we appreciate everybody's involvement and support, um, to help, um, with the Main Street and hope to come more and more together. Uh, city manager applications, we currently have 11 applications for the city managers that are ready for review, whenever they are ready, so that's all the city manager.
Alrighty, moving on to reviewables. Question?
There, there's a, uh, consultant fee for $6,749.
Is that for, what is the name on it?
It says, Mark Vena.
Uh, that's for our gas department, so right now, our gas department is doing audits with Railroad Commission. So to become in compliance with everything, we have a consultant come in, uh, periodically to help us with our audits, uh, make sure we're ready for those for Railroad Commission. So there's around that many findings and penalties, there's a lot of that good stuff. So we have Simon come in for, uh, consultant work on our, on our preparedness for our audits.
Is that because we're not licensed to do that, or?
I'm sorry?
Is that because we're not certified to do that, or what is the reason?
So each, each year, whenever the Railroad Commission or CEU or whatever the case may be, they, um, have a listing for us to go ahead and be coming to find. Now, there's a lot of new regulations with Railroad Commission, um, referencing now we're being pulled in with, uh, HR, uh, policies. So it's not just the gas department, it's throughout. Um, so as all those new regulations are implemented set forth, uh, the consultants come to help us understand and know what those regulations are, how to implement them, policies. And make sure that we adopt them properly and put them into place. So that's what the consultant needs to work.
I have a question, please.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. So whoever's in charge of that department, are they able to go to trainings throughout the year?
Yes.
To be updated, so we don't have to go through a consultant firm?
Yes.
Because usually when you go through a consultant firms, because you have previously had several findings. You know, so if they go and go to training and go, you know, every year to get updated, because in my line of work, every year the laws change. But are they able to go to training, so we don't have to get a consultant, or have they had findings in the past?
No findings, there have been, uh, minor findings, but every year there's new findings. So with Railroad Commission, these new regulations, during the timeframe that they implement those regulations, where are we hitting the audit? So in order to get those CEUs or whatnot, by the time those trainings are in session, they're still outdated from previous regulations, they're not up to date. And even so, with the up-to-date implementing and putting them in the process, where are we hitting the audit right now? So it's very fast-paced, uh, and that's where we get this, um, consultant that's right in line with Railroad Commission. They have all the insights, so they're able to come in and say, hey, we need to do this, do this. We've been doing this audit since when, like. Yeah, last year is longer and it's every year they keep on with more regulations. And like you said, there are, we, um, Mr. Cuddy does do CEUs, um, for gas, and there are still a lot of our additions that are being interplaced and we're still getting audited. Not in a timing manner, but it's still up to us to make sure that we enforce them and implement them as we go through to the not guilty penalties and everything.
So with the consultant, we're still getting findings?
Um, well, the.
We have a budget for that, and every time that rules, the regulations come out, they change, and, and they could keep up with that. He also comes in on the audit, actually, River to the Sea, there, he is here for the guy who, uh, all the paperwork, all the new regulations terminated. Every year it changes. This year I got, I've been getting three audits. Four of us on this one, a year. Now, it's coming out that we're going to have three on this year.
Yeah, they're changing up the regulation. They're putting more stress on us because they're coming down on them. So, um, he is being utilized to help us keep the pace and everything. Um, like I said, he's been doing it for quite some time, I can see he's been shutting up to keep us from target with all the regulations and everything putting forth on us. Um, so that's just not correct, but definitely that's something that we can look at to make sure that. But in, in case, in this case, it's something that we have to do permanently. We'll implement some extra training materials or whatever we need to be in prep in the future to help alleviate that cost. Because I have CEUs and I know Simon is very sensitive, but that's something that I have to keep track with versus getting kind of high, uh, higher costs.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so if you're going to have three audits this year, are we going to have to pay him $6,000 three times, or is this just going to be a one-time charge?
Well, that was preliminary. Whenever the auditors come, they come to audit. They, they come and they'll write in for whatever it is that you need, and then that's whenever the penalties come in or they say, okay, you're good. He is preliminary. So it's not like, for me, that we got, um, Mr. Dale and Carter are a queue to, we paying him to come in to audit for us. Then they're totally different. What's coming down, they're auditing all your stuff, be ready, we don't pay for that. This is the consultant for to get ready for the unannounced audits that come down on us. The, the consultant, yes, for each visit that we, that he does.
So it's going to be $6,000 for?
$6,800 times three, over 20 grand?
And that's something that we have been doing for, you know, for years.
He's a non, he's a non-employee, um, he's a non-employee.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. If you want to address the city manager, you have to ask permission. You don't just speak out.
Don't matter.
It's the whole, the whole.
I'm actually standing on low, but you don't know.
Well, you don't, you don't have to let us know, okay? You don't have to let us know, it's a way to do it, I'm not saying you can't do it. But if you want to address, I'll recognize you, you stand up and speak what you have to do. Don't just burst out and speak.
When was the, when was the last time that we got fined, let's see?
Um, for, for gas, or?
Well, the work that this consultant is doing.
In February, I have, it was the first one, February, Gaiden, and, uh, March.
We got fined in February and then we got fined in March. What was the amount of fine?
We just, they give the option of, uh, correct it before you go through the fine.
So what happens is whenever they come down and audit us, they look at everything and they'll say, okay, this is not in compliance, this is past date. Um, you have this and this that you need to correct. You have 30 days or however many days to become in compliance, provide an explanation, a plan, set forth, and then we go ahead and we have Simon as well. Um, that's without him coming down here to just email him and say, hey, does this look good? Will we pass this? We need to be doing these steps. He verifies everything, we submit it, um, to the auditor and then they say, okay, we're good to go. No penalize, no penalizing anything, just making sure that they implement the, the plan and the program. So that's where all this comes into play. We have to work together to keep us up to date. Like you said, he's had three, four audits and they're coming back now a few months later and it's just constant.
Going back to the comment that the council made on the, uh, times three, okay, the three times that he comes down, 18,000 dollars. Um, it's been going on for like two, three years, right here, okay? Now, the question is, don't you think it's more feasible to get somebody trained in-house and to stop paying all these $20,000 every single time? I mean, it's something to look at.
Yeah, that is something to look at. And another thing that we have to look at, because of employee rates, uh, stuff, all that, and we have a huge turnover right now. So it's not, with all the rules, regulations, and then providing for somebody to be employed and strictly, that is their function. Where right now, a lot of our employees, they don't want things. Um, so it's, it's just something where you have to pay where you know that consultant, that's all he does, that's all he's focused on, and we move forward and it's getting us out of a lot of problems. The gas department is very crazy. We're trying to look to get away from gas because it does, um, put up a big hole in our budget. But, um, that's something that we have to, to go ahead and look at this.
I, I agree with that comment, but I disagree with your solution because the gas company isn't the one who makes this money.
Yes.
So if we can keep the maintenance, maintenance up, I think we'll be okay because that's the moneymaker.
But I agree, it's, it's a high cost.
Yes.
It doesn't make us a lot of money because we don't have any accounting. People are just not turning on the gas.
It used to, but not anymore.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm, electricity.
Mayor, I have one more comment, um, a question, comment. Um, with the audits, the only thing, because prior to five years ago, we weren't hiring consultants for the gas. And there wasn't that fines on it, there was little issues here and there. But are we not available for a surprise audit? Because we should be prepared. Our paperwork should be prepared, where if they give us a 24-hour notice, that we're able to go back, look online, see if there's any updated rules, laws, provisions that have been updated? Uh, to me, it sounds like the consultant is doing the employee's job and they're not doing anything. And that's just what I'm getting back from this, that y'all are having to call a consultant every time y'all get a surprise audit? When I believe the shit, work should be done. Yes, you're going to get a couple of findings, oh, well, that just changed last week or last month. Oh, well, not aware of it, but I'll get on it. But for him to come and say, I've got a surprise visit, I need a consultant because my work ain't done. That's where it's kind of, are we not getting the work done? That we have to hire a consultant every time they do a surprise audit?
Like I said, this, we have been doing this consultant for quite some time. And as rules and regulations are implemented, all the time, we, like I said, the employees wear multiple hats. They don't just do one. Mr. Cuddy's always the utility supervisor, he's out with broke, he's out with gas, he's out with water. And this has been going on for some time now. Um, so yes, we are falling behind, but this consultant has been used prior to that as well. These new rules and these new regulations, they are keeping, being updated. These not be, um, audited by the Railroad Commissioner, now we're being audited three times. So that's where the stress is, and that's where the continuation of this consultant is being utilized. Yes, we are implementing new plans and we're, um, keeping them in force along the way. But at the same time, more rules and regulations are being updated as well. So it's, like I said, it's very fast-paced and with the employees and staff that we have, we're in multiple hats. But we're still implementing, we're still improving it, and we haven't been penalized, so.
Okay. Okay, are you done with your manager's report?
Yes.
Okay, reviewables, it was on reviewables, that's right. One question, reviewables. Alrighty, okay. So Lisa?
I know.
Can keep up, general announcements?
Oh, general announcement, uh, Ms. Plato, we have a grand opening tomorrow. Um. The room for you is opening up at 814 West Mall Street, Little Pinkut, going down from here and being built up. At 5:30 PM tomorrow, they're having a little grand opening. Uh, we'll do it, we're excited. Uh, invited city council members that are available, 5:00 tomorrow, 814 West Mall Street.
Any other announcements?
Mayor, correct.
A general announcement?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I want to recognize, uh, uh, Chief of Police, Peter, City of the Year. Uh, I was hoping that would be on the agenda, but it's not. But on behalf of myself and the, uh, the council, we want to thank you very much. This week is an unfortunate week and, uh, I'm sorry that, uh, we didn't get to acknowledge y'all as a whole. But, uh, on my behalf, and especially on behalf of the council, we want to say thank you very much for everything you do for the citizens of Pearsall.
And also we give you our condolences, uh, for the loss of your sister.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Alrighty, city council inquiries for staff. You just kept adding, let me finish. Um, our items for future agendas, no discussion or action of any of these items at this time. So this is where you, if you want to place something on the agenda, and you have to have two, two others to agree with you. Yes, sir?
I'd like to see if we can, as soon as possible, set up a council retreat for rules and responsibilities as a council member. Um, on top of that, also. And rules of occasion, on top of that, I would like to get a, a punch card on, uh, all the projects that have been completed this year and the ones that are still pending with a spreadsheet of all the expenditures associated with those projects. And where we're at as far as what those projects have been budgeted at as well, that we're over budget, under budget, and so on and so forth.
Alrighty, any other council member?
If we want something on the agenda, do we need two signatures?
Yes, we need two to agree with.
Two others to agree with.
Mm-hmm, okay, okay. So we have three, okay?
They don't have anything yet.
Okay.
Do we have a timeframe, like before the meeting?
Well, this will be the next regular meeting, not necessarily special, so, um.
Next month.
In event you want something and you don't get to.
Like throughout the month?
Yeah, if you want something and you, you can't get to, council members, you can always come to me and I can put it on the agenda right away.
Okay, so it doesn't like, if I don't have anything right now, next week something comes up? Okay.
I would suggest to have this one as a special, special meeting, if possible. For the council retreats, you said, don't.
The, the retreat? Yeah, the retreat, yeah.
The retreat.
Yes, the retreat.
The Friday day? I, I was, I was hoping, uh, like the last week of the month, if possible. I, I want a whole day retreat, though.
What, would you say that the, the item itself will be to identify a date for, for the council retreat?
Yes, you have to put a date. No, you can do it now, for the retreat.
We've done, we've done a retreat the last, the last two, uh, six years after the election. And basically, it's, it's a way to update, update all of us, update all of us, um, the current status of the city in terms of all business. And so to acknowledge that what's transpired, projects have been started, completed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You can all get, and say, maybe they can happen.
Oh, dang.
And then have discussions. You can all just have a meeting, say, you know, and then have discussions, so we can know how to proceed.
Are you talking about for the retreat?
The retreat.
We're looking at Saturdays, right?
Yeah, preferably June the first.
June first, yeah, because.
At the library. Where did you meet there?
June first.
I worked that weekend.
It's Saturday.
The first again.
You don't work on Saturday?
June the first.
June first. Yes, have you?
At the library.
At the library, to include council and city manager. Intro, sorry.
Could we review the applications for city manager for the next meeting?
We don't have them.
What, to be placed on there to get?
Oh, that's to be on, and on the agenda.
That's, that's the question I have.
Yeah, that's going to be on the next.
I know you're talking about retreat for June first, but are we not gonna have a meeting in between, before June first?
Probably so, because we need to elect a municipal judge, and you guys can interview the same three, or if any more application come in, so we're gonna, we're gonna have more. So yes, there will be another city meeting, but we're talking retreat now.
Okay, but from now till June first, we are gonna have a special meeting?
Yes, a special.
Reason being that, of course, we need to talk about the city manager, okay? Crunch time is coming, you probably know, a budget, you know.
Exactly.
Interviews, and it's gonna take some time when we're gonna start setting up the interviews and stuff like that, so.
Exactly.
You know, before we.
So we haven't.
August, and then we give them a lot of, so if we can have a meeting sometime next week, one week, maybe.
I'll put it on the agenda.
Also, I don't know if, I don't know if this council has talked about any grants with Texas Water Board?
We'll talk about that, unless you want that on the agenda, we can't bring up anything else, you want to put that on the agenda?
Yes, I'll put it on the agenda, unless, y'all will talk about it, because the open season for grant writing, accepting grants is open right now.
Okay, so you need two to agree with you?
I'll go ahead.
Okay.
Going back to the interview process, we do need to put that on the agenda, or for the special?
Yes.
So I would like it on the.
The next week.
The applications, the applications for the special, so we start.
We have copies.
Yeah, that's, that will be with the judge and the city manager, which will be next week, okay? Next Tuesday is okay?
The last request I had, Mayor, for that meeting that we're gonna have, if we can put the item on the agenda, and by law, it has to be somebody that, I'm pretty sure if she agrees with me, since we're new, but it has to be either whoever voted against the motion, there was a motion that died on the five-two, it was for the extension of benefits for the Pierceville Volunteer Fire Department, it died on the five-two motion. By law, the only two people that can put it on is either the two people that were not here, which is just two, and one more, which would be Councilwoman Hernandez or Councilwoman Gander, the people that voted against it, by law. So I'll ask, could we put, put that item, put it on the agenda? I'll mean two, and I just need one more.
Put it back.
And you know which one that is, Crystal? Is that?
Um, sorry, for his item for city manager application, are you putting it on there, or does he have a second?
He has a second.
And then rolling yours was for Texas Water Board grant, was that the title?
Uh, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Well, if I may, Mayor, on that, on that issue that Crystal just asked, what I did was, hope I don't get in trouble, but I copied it from the county, I was at the commissioner's court last week, and the county had this issue with applying for Texas Water Board, and the big was, they hired this consultant at no cost, because the, what the consultants were is that.
They get percentage of the grants.
To add to the fact, and I have the name of the company, if y'all need it.
So we'll, we'll talk about that when that item is on the agenda.
On the agenda, okay.
All righty, is that it? Can I get a motion to it, Julie?
Motion.
Say okay? Y'all come back down here.